Looks like seven. Welcome, everyone. The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of July 12, 2023 is now called to order. And we'll begin, as always, with the presentation by staff of the rules of decorum and civility.
The public is welcome to participate in the meetings, understanding that the purpose of the meeting is to conduct the important business of the town in an efficient and effective manner. For the benefit of the entire community, the Town of Los Gatos asks that all speakers follow the town's meeting guidelines by treating everyone with respect and dignity. This is done by following meeting guidelines set forth in state law, in the town code, and on the cover sheet of the agenda. The town embraces diversity and strongly condemns hate speech and offensive hateful language or racial intolerance of any kind at board, commission, or committee meetings. Town council and staff are well aware of the public's right to disagree with their professional opinion on various town issues. However, antisocial behavior, slander, hatred, and bigotry statements are completely unacceptable and will not be tolerated in any way, shape, or form at board, commission, or committee meetings. All public comments at the board, commission, or committee meeting must pertain to items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the town and shall not contain slanderous statements, hatred, and bigotry against non-public officials. The town will go through the following steps if a disturbance results from a member of the public not following these rules. If participating remotely, town staff may mute the individual with an explanation for the record of why muting occurred consistent with this policy. If participating in person, the chair may call a recess for violation of this policy, resulting in the immediate cessation of the audio and video recording and the commissioners exiting the chamber or meeting room. Staff will determine if the individual should be removed or if all members of the public should leave, depending on the extent of the disturbance. In the event that all public members exit, only the press would be allowed back in the meeting. Once the individual or individuals leave, the commissioners would return to the chamber or meeting room and the chair would resume the meeting. Persons disrupting a board, commission, or committee meeting may be cited for violation of the California Penal Code, Section 403.
Thank you for that presentation, and I'll ask everyone here to silence their devices if they haven't already done so. And we'll begin with the roll call. Vice Chair Raspe?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
And I am here as well. And tonight, Commissioner Hansen is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as we begin, I have a few preliminary remarks to present. During the meeting tonight, any person who desires to speak must first be recognized by the chair. All participants must speak at the mic in the front or when called on in Zoom. Public comments are directed to the commission as a body and not to the audience. No person other than commissioners, staff, and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into this discussion. All members of the applicants' team, in this case, shall be heard as a group within the stated time limits, and questions by commissioners do not count against your time. No member of the public is allowed to speak a second time, and to assure the opportunity for all speakers to speak, there is no yielding of time to another speaker. So as we begin tonight, the Planning Commission encourages active participation by the public, which is essential to our democracy and important to the work of the commission, and public input is always welcome and carefully considered. And the public's participation may occur in several ways. First, written comments about agenda items may be submitted to the staff prior to the meeting. And during the meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to speak. The first is during verbal communications, during which a speaker may address anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. And during the hearing itself on Agenda Items 1, 2, and 3, any member of the public may speak on that item. You'll be advised of when those speaking opportunities occur. And if you wish to address the commission tonight, either during verbal communications or on Items 1 through 3, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. And for those here in person, please complete a speaker card using the cards in front of you, and that will be brought up by staff. When you're called to speak, let's see, we already discussed that. We ask that you state your name and address when you're called to speak, unless you want to speak anonymously, which is fine. And so we now begin the verbal communications portion of our agenda and ask any members of the public to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda for tonight. Okay, Mr. Paulson, if we have anyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair. No one is raising their hand on Zoom.
And does any member of the public wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Could we have your card up here first? Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Albert Luzer with the Northern California Carpeters Local 405. I'm here to speak about just it's great to see new development coming to the city of Los Gatos, but it'll be great to see having some area standards in the new projects coming up. The area standards include a livable wage, apprenticeship, local hire, and healthcare. Earning a livable wage ensures that construction workers like myself can afford rent in our city to support their family and provide all the basic needs. Not leaving check by check gives the construction worker the opportunity to provide higher education for his children, promote better future for the family, and not just a dream. A livable wage prevents wage theft and tax fraud, which happens more than often. Having a responsible contractor for providing healthcare ensures that construction workers have healthcare for the family and not to become a burden to the system, since 80% of the construction workers depend on some government aid. Apprenticeship promotes a training and education for at least youth, minorities, women into a four-year program. For some of us, it's the only opportunity we have. And to be able to learn a livable wage and not, you know, getting a shot to the American dream. This program also provides credits for apprenticeships to continue college and get a college degree. Local hire promotes quality of life for the construction workers by being able to spend more time with their loved ones and be part of the community, and also benefits the environment by reducing pollution and not pushing our local workforce away from our city. I would like to ask the elected officials for the city of Los Gatos, please adopt area standard labors in our city, which include livable wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, and local hire. Thank you.
Before you go, let me ask if any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Luzer? Not seeing any. Thank you, sir. We have no items on the consent calendar today, so we're going to move on to item number one, and that is ask the commission to consider a request for approval of a zone change from R-18 pre-zone single-family residential, minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, to CH restricted commercial highway, and also a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from low-density residential to mixed-use commercial for property located at 15810 Los Gatos Boulevard, APN 523-01-001. As noted in the agenda, an environmental impact report was prepared and certified for the 2040 general plan update on June 30, and included a proposed general plan amendment for this property. Per staff, no additional environmental analysis is required. And the requests apply to zone change application Z-23-001 and general plan amendment application The property owner is Jesus Ching and Kathleen Ben, and the project commissioner is Jocelyn Schubman. And we'll have a request for a show of hands of those who have visited the property. Thank you. And are there any disclosures tonight? I don't see any. So we will begin with a presentation by Ms. Schubman, if you would.
Sure, thank you. Good evening. Before you, tonight is a request for approval of a zone change from R18 pre-zone to CH and a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from low-density residential to mixed-use commercial. The approximate 10,000-square-foot parcel is located at the southeast corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Farley Road and contains an existing commercial building. The property is presently located in an unincorporated area of Santa Clara County with a parcel with the zoning of perhaps administrative and professional office and a general plan lane use designation of urban service area Los Gatos. Concurrently with the zone change and general plan amendment application, the property owner has also submitted an annexation application that is currently under review by the county. This is anticipated to be considered by the town council once that review has been completed. At this time, no modifications to the building or use of the building as a dentist's office is proposed by the applicant. The request was considered by the general plan committee on May 10 of this year, where the committee recommended approval of the general plan amendment. This completes staff's presentation, but I am available for any questions.
Thank you for that, Ms. Schubman, and I'll turn to my fellow commissioners and see if they have any questions, and I do not see any. So thank you again. And we'll now open the public portion of the public hearing on item number one and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. And we have two cards, Mr. Ching and Mr. Shanks. And if you're part of the same team, then there will be a five-minute limit for both of you.
Good evening. I'm Roger Shanks, Land Use Consultant. We're working with the applicant on this project. This is an interesting project in that it's already been changed to this designation with the 2040 general plan, which has been now suspended for a while. So we are asking that this go back to the same designation. If you, we could put up that one. Okay, this is your general plan, and the property discussion is right here. I tried to circle that. It is about the only commercial piece fronting on Los Gatos Boulevard that is not in this designation. It is designated right now, single-family. The three properties adjacent to it, right here, all back up to Los Gatos Boulevard. They have no access to the street, so they're accessing into the residential neighborhood. This is a single-story building. They want to keep that at this point. They have no intention at this point of changing it. The access is out to Los Gatos Boulevard. So we feel that this really conforms to the overall goal and objective of the general plan and is in keeping with the theme of maintaining the residential character of this surrounding area and not impacting on that. So if you have any questions, I will be more than glad to answer it, and the property owner is here also.
Will the property owner be speaking too?
Yes, he will.
Okay, so let's stop the clock if we can and ask commissioners if they have any questions for you at this point. I don't see any. So Mr. Ching, please proceed.
My name is Jesus Ching. I'm the property owner of 15810 Los Gatos Boulevard. I just want to say thank you to Jennifer and Jocelyn for helping me walk through this detailed process over the last three years. So, but please consider, you know, our proposal here. We are trying to get the, you know, the property incorporated into the town of Los Gatos and continue to provide services for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before you go back to sitting down, I'll ask commissioners if they have any questions for you, and I do not see any. So thanks you again.
Thank you.
So, well, now let's see, where we go next here? Oh, yeah. Thank you. So we'll invite comments on item one from members of the public, and please use the raised hand to feature in Zoom or if you're speaking in person tonight and have not already done so, please bring up a card to staff. And I don't see anyone. Mr. Paulson?
Thank you, Chair. No, there's no one with their hand raised for this item.
Okay, thank you. We'll now close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any commissioners have questions of staff, wish to comment on the request, or introduce a motion for consideration by the commission. Commissioner Hansen?
I don't have any questions. I actually sit on the general plan committee when we heard the general plan amendment portion of this. Now, this is both a general plan amendment and a zoning change, but it would make it consistent with its general plan designation if it is approved by the commission. When we heard this, that's general plan committee. There was a few questions, but there was no issues that anyone brought up. It seemed very straightforward. We don't have the Los Gatos Boulevard plan anymore, but when we had that plan, the idea was the only residential on the Boulevard was going to be further down south. So this seemed to be very consistent with both the 2020 general plan and what we're looking at for the housing element. And ultimately, if the 2040 land use plan is, you know, presumed is approved in any form, it should be consistent with that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Hansen. Another input? We'll start with Commissioner Jennifer.
Thank you. I also sit on the general plan commission, and the comments that we had during that meeting also involved talking about this notion of small-town character, the proximity of this residential designation to other residences, and whether it made sense for there to be a residential designation on Los Gatos Boulevard within access off of Los Gatos Boulevard. And for a lot of reasons, it doesn't make sense for that to be residential, so the request seemed a reasonable request to us. It's designated residential, but if it's changed to mixed-use, then in theory, we have the opportunity to see more residential than just one unit on this property, and that's also consistent with where we want to go with the general plan and the housing element. And just want to just reiterate that it, I believe, is the only residential, I mean, it isn't residential, it's working as a commercial entity, but there are no other residences or anything close to residential from Lark Avenue down to probably, I don't know, past Blossom Hill Road. So it doesn't seem to make sense for the overall fabric of the town for this to remain residential. So I'm in support of making the recommendation as requested.
Thank you for that. And Commissioner Burnett, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So question, I agree with Commissioner Janoff. I did want to mention that the property is located in an unincorporated area of Santa Clara County and that the property owner has submitted an annexation application is under review, so I just wanted to be sure there would be no issue regarding that matter.
No, there's no issue with that.
Anything further? I'd like Ms. Armour to confirm what I believe I heard yesterday, which is that housing would be allowed in this CH zone, at least if there was a conditional use permit.
Thank you for that question, yes. This is in a mixed-use zone, or is being proposed to be in a mixed-use zone, and therefore residential could be allowed on the site as part of a mixed-use project through the conditional use permit process.
Thank you very much. I think we might be ready for a motion. Commissioner Hansen?
I move that we approve general plan amendment application GP-23-001 and zone change application Z-23-001, which is considering an express request for approval for the zone change from R18 pre-zone, single-family residential to CH restricted commercial highway, as well as the general plan amendment to change the land use designation from low-density residential to mixed-use commercial for property located at 15810 Los Gatos Boulevard, APN 523-01-001. An environmental impact report was repaired and certified for the 2040 general plan update on June 30, 2022, which was mentioned by our chair. This included the proposed general amendment for the property. No further environmental analysis is required because of that, and the property owners were already speaking. I can make the required findings for SEQA, and I can make the findings for the required consistency with the town's general plan, that the general plan amendment is internally consistent with the existing goals and policies of the plan and its elements, and that the proposed zoning is also consistent with the proposed general plan change. And I think there's a draft ordinance. Do we have to mention that as well in the motion? Okay, so that's my motion.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Jennifer?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we can have a show of hands now, so all those in favor of the motion? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So we'll continue with Agenda Item Number Two, which requests approval for renovation of an existing commercial building and modification of an existing conditional use permit for an automotive dealership, Los Gatos Luxury Cars, on property zone CH located at 620 Blossom Hill Road, APN 529-16-041, categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA Guideline, Section 15301, existing facilities. This is architectural and site application S-22-050, and conditional use permit U-22-012. Property owner is John Thomas, trustee, and the applicant is Derek Freeman. Please correct me if that's a mispronunciation. And the project planner is Sean Mullin. So again, may I have a show of hands by the commissioners who have visited the property and are in the disclosures tonight? Don't see any. So Mr. Mullin, I understand you'll be making our presentation tonight from staff.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Before you this evening is a request for consideration of an addition to an existing car dealership and modification to an existing conditional use permit for Los Gatos luxury cars. Subject property is 2.65 acres located across from the intersection with Blossom Hill and Oak Rim Way. The existing dealership occupies a single building with four showrooms, two service shops, and a second-story office space. The proposed product, project would demolish the existing east service shop and construct additions to the building to accommodate a new service shop and two showrooms. The proposed addition includes exterior materials to match those on the existing building. The net impact of the project would add 3,914 square feet to the property, resulting in a 34,174-square-foot building. The proposed building size, height, and lot coverage comply with the limitations of the CH zone. The project also includes site improvements, including a new customer patio, reconfigured parking areas, and a new emergency access driveway located on the western edge of the property. In addition to the proposed construction, the applicant seeks modification of the existing CUP for the dealership. The current CUP limits the number of service bays to 18. However, there are currently 27 bays on site, but the town doesn't have any record for how this increase occurred. The proposed project would reduce the number of service bays on-site to 21, and the requested modifications to the CUP include an increase in the total square footage for the site and an increase in the number of approved service bays from 18 to 21. Your staff report includes an evaluation of the proposed project against the findings required to grant a CUP. Based on the summary provided in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the project subject to the recommended conditions of approval for the architecture and site application and the recommended conditions included with the modified conditional use permit. An addendum and desk item to your staff report have been distributed, including additional materials from the applicant clarifying some of the existing materials on the structure and that the project would not be constructed in phases, as some original imagery was shown that was included with your staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mullin, and I'll turn to my commissioners to see if they have questions for you at this time. Commissioner Hansen?
I don't think it's a problem because of the proposal that's happening, but when we have a CUP in place where the CUP had a maximum of 18 service bays and they went up to 27, I know there's no record. Does that cause an issue from code compliance standpoint?
Thank you for that question. Being primarily complaint-based for code enforcement, the town had not received any complaints and wasn't aware that that was the case on-site until this application was filed.
And then to recap, they're actually reducing the actual number of service bays from 27 to 21?
Reducing and then asking for an increase for the permitted, so in this case, it sort of solves the overage issue.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff on this item? I'm not seeing any. So we will now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. And we have a card from Mr., sorry, is it Mr. Oaks? Yeah, thank you for coming forward. Speaking to the mic.
And through the chair, we also have Mark Price online through the Zoom, who is also part of the applicant team.
Okay, so again, I'll remind you that we have five minutes' presentation time for both of you. So please proceed.
Good evening. I'm Christian Oaks with TWM Architects, and I just wanted to explain a little bit about the project. The, there's four showrooms currently. It's been an auto dealership for a long time. The, they're all small boutique luxury and exotic cars. The building in the back to the left on the image up there is the building that we'd like to tear down. It is, I estimate, to have been built about 1950s. It is really poor construction. It won't take any lateral to meet current codes. And it is all service bays, and that's how the number of service bays is so high. We have this old building on the site that's really not very good. It's got a very low roof. It's been there, being used for service as long as we've been alive. And we've looked at every way to try to salvage and renovate this building. We have two new brands that want to come to Los Gatos and be part of this dealership, and we just want to build some small showrooms for them because they're very expensive cars. We're not increasing the amount of traffic or impact very much. And in tearing the building down, we benefit by having some real state-of-the-art service bays that can service these cars. The world has evolved. The design and the engineering of these cars has really evolved tremendously. The site, so the back building will look really like part of the whole complex of building. We're not adding a whole lot of square foot. It'll just extend it to look a little bit more like a real shopping, true high-quality shopping center. The showrooms, the new showrooms, if you flip to the next image, will look a lot like the existing showrooms. They'll be very slightly different with a few of the requirements, and these are very sophisticated programs for these showrooms. As far as the site is concerned, we're not taking out any trees. We're improving fire access. We're improving utilities to the building. We're balancing the parking out. We're not increasing the number of cars that are out on display. We're not increasing lighting. We also are not, it's a site that the general manager tells me has no real problems with the neighbors. He has a great relationship with them. There's one neighbor, he tells me, does like to make sure the American flag that's on the site is not frayed, and he tends to that right away across the street. Mario, the general manager, is watching tonight on Zoom, and he may want to speak. He'd like to meet you and let you know he's available if you have any concerns to resolve tonight. We also have our civil engineer online tonight on Zoom to answer any technical site-related questions, and Derek Froman, our construction manager, who's going to oversee all the construction on this project, contractor selection, is also here tonight if you have any questions about those kind of impacts. Just in closing, it is, we're not introducing any large signs. We're really in compliance, we believe, with the general plan to renovate and preserve the auto dealerships and the auto dealerships, and which helps generate tax revenue and things like that for the city. I'd like to offer Mario, the general manager, an opportunity to speak if he would like to.
Wait, let's stop the clock, keep you here, and see if the commissioners have any questions for you. I was wondering if there are going to be any changes in the landscape that's visible from the street?
The only landscaping that we're changing is we do need to meet some stormwater retention requirements. We're not adding enough square footage to trigger any real landscape elements that are already there, so it's pretty light.
So it'll present, from the landscaping standpoint, as it now is?
We do have a streetscape in our packet there that shows that there's really no impact on the streetscape.
Great, thank you very much. No questions from the commissioners this time? Okay, so we can proceed to the next. Thank you very much. We'll proceed with... Is it Mario?
Mario, you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you.
We actually have Mark Price unmuted, but Mario now also has his raised hand raised.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. First, I would like to say that our company and our team, we love the city of Los Gatos and the entire community, and we are very excited to have opportunity to add more prestigious brands to our store. Both brands, McLaren and Lotus, are thrilled to be represented in Los Gatos. And with addition of these two brands, we will be really representing most prestigious exotic car brands in the world. What I would like to emphasize that our entire operation is created for the convenience of our clients. So we sell most of our cars online, delivering them to clients.
We seem to have lost the connection with him.
He was out of time anyway, but as Chair, I would be willing to allow him to speak for another two minutes if he wants to get back online.
Mr. Price is interested in speaking, so we'll go ahead and give him that time.
Thank you.
I believe it's Mr. Price. Mr. Price, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if you're referring to me. I'm Melinda Peacock, not Mr. Price.
Thank you. Is she involved with the project? So I'm not sure why she was raising her hand. One second.
I'm a homeowner behind the...
Okay, so that'll be part of the public comment.
Thank you.
So Mario is back.
Okay. Yeah, please proceed, Mario, and we're having a two-minute clock on you at this time. Thank you.
Mario, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
What I wanted to say, our entire operation is created for the convenience of our clients. So most of the cars we sell are sold online, and most of the time we're delivering them directly to clients. Regarding our service operation, we have two enclosed carriers that they are going to clients daily picking up and delivering cars before and after repairs. So the impact of the foot traffic or cars adding to these two brands will be very minimal. So we are excited, obviously, to create more revenue for our company, our employees, and the city of Los Gatos as well.
Is that the end of your comments?
Yes.
Okay, thanks very much, Mario. Are there any questions for the speaker at this time? Not seeing any. So I'll now invite comments from the public on Item Number Two. Please use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if you're speaking in person tonight, we would need a card from you. And let's see. Again, ask for people to, speakers to state their name and address if they would, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I believe it's time for who's identified as Ms. Peacock to speak.
Thank you. So, Melinda Peacock, I'm at 1693. I realize this is a commercial property. Company has every right to do business on your property and be profitable. I think that's great. But I'm hoping we can create a win-win situation where the property is behind you along the south elevation, and also enjoy the property and retain the property values. So the big concern for many of us, and I am representing multiple homeowners, is that a very large section of the building along the south elevation, which I believe is currently at 18 feet, is being increased to a height of 22 feet. Because the building is so close to the property line, this extra four feet has a dramatic impact on those of us who live behind you. It fully blocks the sky, and it blocks what is a current majestic view of the mountains from the second floor. Thus, it really impacts our enjoyment of our houses and our backyard, as well as our property values. Given that the current use of this particular portion of your building is for service lifts and that the new use will be for service lifts and employee break room, we're asking if it would be possible to keep the height at the existing 18 feet.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have questions for the speaker? I have one. I was unable to hear the name of the street that you live on.
Ms. Peacock, we're not hearing you. Which street? And maybe Mr. Mullen knows which street there on the south side.
Yeah. It's Roberts Road, 16965 Roberts Road. But I'm also representing people who live on either side of me.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So we'll now give the applicant up to three minutes for any additional comments that might be spurred by public comments, or if you wanted to provide other material from your presentation. You can speak up to three minutes now, but you're not required to. I don't see anyone coming forward. So we'll close the public portion of the public hearing on Item Two and ask if any commissioners have questions of staff, wish to comment on the requests, or introduce a motion for consideration by the commission. Commissioner, Vice Chair Respe, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate Ms. Peacock's comments and those of her neighbors as well. And I understand the concern about going taller, but it seems to me that in this case, the height, or at least the raising of the height, is generally minimal and well within the allowances for this property. So this property has allowed 50% lot coverage. It's only using 27.6%. It's allowed 35 feet in height, and it's only using 22 feet in height. It's allowed or only required to have 93 parking spaces. It has 100 parking spaces. So it seems to me that this is a project that's designed well within the parameters of what's allowed by town. And aside from that, I think it's aesthetically pleasing from the designs we've seen. So I would be in favor of approving this application as presented.
Thank you. Vice Chair Respe, other comments? We have Commissioner Hanson here.
I looked at this, you know, in addition to the actual schematics of the project and, you know, the height and whatnot. It's also the kind of business that fits into the small-town character of Los Gatos. The business has been there for quite some time. It's a reasonable request. There's no code violations that are being requested, or, you know, zoning changes or anything like that. So it seems to fit well with the small-town character of Los Gatos. I did have a bit of pause when I heard the neighbors complain, but then, you know, I remembered that we do allow up to 35 feet for commercial properties. They're very much well within that, and an additional three feet, it would be a really owner's request to ask them to reduce that. So I'm in favor of the project as well.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners? No? Well, I have noted that the approval of the modified conditional use permit and of the architectural and site application require the adoption of the findings and considerations in Exhibit Two and approval of the recommended conditions in Exhibits Three and Four. So it sounds like we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Joffe?
I move to approve the architecture and site application S-22-050 and the conditional use permit, application U-22-012, for property located at 620 Blossom Hill Road, requesting approval for renovation of an existing commercial building and modification of an existing conditional use permit for an automotive dealership, Los Gatos Luxury Cars, on property zone CH. Property owner, applicant, John Thomas, trustee; applicant, Derek Froman; integrity design and construction; project planner, Sean Mullen. I can make the required findings for CEQA. I can make the required finding that it is in compliance with the zoning regulations, and I can make the required findings for the conditional use permit as detailed on Page 45 of Exhibit Two. I can find that it is consistent with the commercial design guidelines. And in consideration of the architecture and site application, we work in... The town code sections, as noted, were considered in this, when reviewing this project. And my motion includes incorporation of Exhibit Three and Exhibit Four.
Thank you very much. I'll look for a second. Commissioner Hanson?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Not seeing any, so I'll ask for a raise of hands for those who are in favor of the motion. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. And I have a conflict of interest on Item Number Three, so I'm going to turn the gavel over to my very capable vice chair.
And through the chair, there are appeal rights on Item Number Two. The decision of the commission can be appealed to Town Council by any interested person as defined by Town Code, Section 2910-020, within 10 days on forms available online with fees paid. Final deadline is 4:00 p.m. on the 10th day.
Thank you very much. So you're ready to go there?
Thank you very much, Chair. We will now consider Agenda Item Number Three, requesting approval to exceed the maximum height of a visible home in the hillside for, in addition to an existing single-family residence, to construct an accessory building with a combined gross floor area greater than 450 square feet but less than 600 square feet, and for site improvements requiring a grading permit on property zone HR-1, located at 15977 Shannon Road, APN 529-01-002. Architecture and site application S-20-017. Property owner, Jart LLC, applicant, Tom Sloan, project manager, project planner, Aaron Walters. Per staff, the proposed construction and site improvements are categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities. Before we proceed, are there any commissioner disclosures on this item? And by show of hands, can I see, have all commissioners visited the site? Thank you so much. Ms. Walters, I understand you'll be giving us the staff report on this item.
Yes. Good evening, planning commissioners. Erin Walters, Associate Planner. Before you tonight is a request for an addition and a remodel to an existing three-story residence and detached accessory structure. The subject hillside zone property is approximately two acres, located north of Shannon Road, approximately 300 feet east of Woolen Way, and accessed by a steep private driveway which services six different homes. The existing resident is visible home, existing per the hillside development standards and guidelines, because it is more than 24.5% of the western elevation can be seen from the Blossom Hill Road, Los Gatos Boulevard, established viewing area. So it's an already visible home, and it exceeds the allowable 18 feet height there. The applicant proposes to retain all three floors of the home, add a three-car garage, attached garage, add additional below-grade square footage, add additional floor area that would result in approximately 6,000 square feet of countable square feet, and modify the contemporary architecture to a contemporary, modern style. The applicant proposes to remove the existing gable roof to introduce a flat roof design to reduce the overall height of the building by five feet. Although the existing building's height and mass will be reduced, it will still exceed that 18 feet for visible homes. The applicant is requesting a height exception in a couple portions of the addition. One is to the rear of the addition, so you would not see it from the viewing area, and that would be, it would exceed, the second-story addition in the back would exceed by two feet, but you would not see it from the viewing platform. Additionally, there is new roof overhangs that extend four inches over that 18-foot allowable height. So the applicant has provided justifications in their attachments. The town's architectural consultant reviewed the project and had no recommendations for changes. The applicant also is requesting a grading permit for site improvements, for grading quantities that exceed the 50 cubic yards. That includes modifications of the existing driveway, a new fire truck turnaround, a new pool, and landscaping. The applicant requests an exception to the hillside development standards and guidelines to exceed a small section of the driveway. The allowable fill there exceeds the maximum allowable, and the reason why that's been incorporated is to accommodate the required fire truck turnaround. So the project is not the largest in the immediate neighborhood, and the project is consistent with zoning and the general plan. The owners have communicated with neighboring property owners, and that is included as an attachment in the staff report. So based on the analysis of the staff report, staff is recommending approval of the architecture and site application, subject to the conditions of approval, and we're available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Are there any questions for staff from any of the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Hanson, please.
I just wanted to confirm that now that the applicant has stayed with their remodeling their existing home and making the improvements, it said in the staff report they've been meeting with Santa Clara County Fire. So Santa Clara County Fire has blessed the project as proposed in our packet, given the, you know, they did ask for some improvements in the driveway and whatnot.
They have. So they have met with Santa Clara County Fire, and the conditions of approval do reflect what is required for this design, and they've also incorporated in the plans as well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other... Commissioner Joffe?
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify with staff. You mentioned that there are two areas that are asking for a height exception. Are both those areas lower than the current height of the house?
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. I notice we have two cards, Mr. Sloan and on Zoom, the homeowner. And as the commissioners have previously informed you, the applicant has five minutes total, so I'll encourage you to allot the time in any way you wish, but your clock will start when you start speaking. And before you begin, if you can state your name and address for the record?
Can we... I think the owner would like to just say a few words before I begin.
In any order you wish.
And she's on Zoom right now.
Do we have...
So the property owners should be able to unmute themselves and speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes, very good. Please proceed.
Okay. My name is Tabaya Thornton, and me and my husband are the owners of 15977 Shannon Road. And this has been a four-year process, and I just want to thank everybody who stuck with us through this, and we're really trying to improve this, and I hope we're going to get good news today. Off to Tom.
Actually, before... Would you proceed? Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Thornton? Seeing none, you may proceed, sir.
Okay. My name is Tom Sloan. I'm the... My name is Tom Sloan. I'm the projects architect and the applicant. When I initially visited this hillside site, I could look straight down to what I'm calling the Duomo of the Chipotle, which we all know down there on the corner. It's a viewing site. And right then I knew I was going to the planning commission. It was, this is a very visible site. And to make it even more tough, it's, we had a three-story house that was there, so. And considerably over the height limit. So tonight I'm going to be presenting you what Larry Cannon called was a very well-designed project. The project is a direct response to the homeowner's objectives and each and every comment that we received from the town staff and from the fire department. There's the first line. The design's parti was developed from the idea and need to mitigate the current height of the building. That mitigation happened quickly as soon as I lopped off the gabled roof. What resulted is a flat roof design that manages to reduce the overall height of the building by five foot and six inches. And the roof elements that exceed 18 feet are still below that and they are illustrated in orange in this diagram. Next one. We are asking for an exception to the hillside design standards and guidelines to exceed 18 feet in height as a remodel in addition. The new common roof overhang really does help with the energy efficiency of the project. Next one. Fire department is requiring that all the exterior building materials have a two-hour fire rating. This is, you don't even have a one-hour fire rating in most homes. So this was part of an alternate materials and methods request that we made. What appears to be wood siding on the home is actually high-performance aluminum. It's a rain screen and a product called Longboard. And if you know about rain screens, they cool the house down. They're very good for all kinds of weather conditions. And plus, it's going to be able to give us, in combination of the construction that we're doing, a two-hour wall. The new, next one. The horizontal roof lines combine with the building's massing and step in concert with the surrounding landforms. The new roof lines eliminate an otherwise bland and boxy building. So the roof, we're getting this exception for the roof and they add so much to the project. The original pool and patio are going to be moved uphill and that puts it in a little more stable ground and away from that drop-off. If you've been up to the site, it drops off pretty quickly on that west side. A small addition to the existing residence was positioned out of view from any viewing platforms. Additionally, the addition is unified within the overall design of this common roof line. Next one. So finally, what we're asking for is there's a portion of the existing driveway that currently has a 22% grade. 15 is normal, maximum. You can get exceptions for up to 20. So that driveway existing is not compliant for the turnaround for emergency vehicles. The new design does meet the fire department standards. It requires only a very small fill of about four feet in depth to exceed the three-foot limit. So that area in red there is the area that, there's a bank embankment in there and that's in the natural topography. That's the small area that we're using to meet the requirement. So I believe we really meet all the findings on the project and approving it will provide a much, much safer home for the homeowner as well as the surrounding neighbors. We're going to be improving the driveway all up for those six other neighbors. And so what I tried to do here is leave everything in a much better shape than it is today. And I think with this project, that's what we'll have.
Thanks so much for your comments, Mr. Sloan. Please, before you sit down, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they have any questions for you. And seeing none, please have a seat and we'll now open the matter to public comment. This portion, if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard either in person or on Zoom for item number three, please raise your hand.
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Thank you Chair. Seeing none, I will again open the matter back to the applicant. Applicant, if you wish to discuss any further matters, you have up to three minutes. You're under no obligation to do so, but thank you. I appreciate that. All right, I will now close the public portion of item number three and turn to my fellow commissioners and see if there are any questions, comments for staff or any thoughts. Commissioner Genov.
Thank you. You know, this darn PRC 4290 is, here's a surprise. And it's unfortunate that that fire department requirement is driving us to retain a larger mass than, a larger and visible mass than the homeowner or, you know, the viewers of this from the viewpoint really would appreciate. So it's unfortunate, but I think what you've designed is, what the applicant has designed is a, is a an attractive contemporary modern home. The fact that it's reducing the height of the current structure is, even though it still exceeds the hillside design guidelines, I think given what the applicant is facing, that's a reasonable request. And that they're increasing the fill because of a fire department requirement, that's also a perfectly reasonable request. So I'm in complete favor of this project as proposed.
Thank you. Commissioner Hansen, please.
I would echo Commissioner Genov's comments. I do think this is a very well-designed project and this is not the first time that we've seen a house that was potentially subjected to this PRC 4290. The requirements and all with the, you know, great intent to actually, you know, create a one-story instead of a three-story house seemed to be a good thing, but to have it kick in and enforce all these new requirements on the surrounding street and whatnot seemed to be way too much. So I appreciate that the applicant has gone to all the trouble of designing around the hillside design standards and guidelines and to minimize the exceptions that would be needed. The house was already exceeding the height in the hillside design guidelines, so it's actually come down from that. And then the only increase to the cut and fill is just simply to meet the fire department requirements. It seems to be a perfectly reasonable request and I'm in, I would be in support of it.
Thank you so much. Any further comments? Yes, Commissioner Burnett.
Yes, and I agree with my fellow commissioners and I want to commend you on the finished building materials that you're going to be using. I think it's going to fit very nicely on the hillside and actually will be less intrusive as it is now. So I commend you for choosing those materials. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I will join in my fellow commissioners. I think we're all of one mind here. I think you've taken a project which was a difficult situation, made the best of it. And I think it's my first time in my recollection that we've had a consulting architect come back with no comments. So congratulations on a well-designed project. And given these comments, commissioners, is there a motion to be heard on this matter? Commissioner Hansen, please.
I move that we approve architecture and site application S-20-017, requesting approval to exceed the maximum height of a visible home in the hillside for in addition to a single-family residence to construct an accessory building with a confined gross floor area greater than 450 feet but less than 600 square feet and for site improvements requiring a grading permit on property zone HR-1, APN 529-01-002. It is categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities. Property owner JART LLC, applicant Tom Sloan. I can make the required findings for CEQA. I can make the required findings for our zoning regulations in accordance with the objective standards of Chapter 29 of our town zoning code. I can make the findings for required compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines with the exception of the two requests that were made to make this project move forward. And I can, and we can grant those exceptions as well. I can make the findings for required compliance with the hillside specific plan as required. And I can make the required considerations in the review of the architecture and site application in accordance with Section 29-20-150 of the town code. And that would include the conditions in Exhibit Three as well as the project plans that were included in our packet.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second on that motion, please? Commissioner Genov.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Any further comments, commissioners? I'll then call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And we are unanimous for nothing. Ms. Armour, are there appeal rights with respect to this?
There are. Thank you. The decision of the commission can be appealed to town council by any interested person as defined by Town Code Section 2910-020 within 10 days on forms available online with fees paid. Final deadline is 4:00 p.m. on the 10th day.
Thank you so much. That concludes the public portion of the agenda. I will now turn to other business and look forward to receiving a report from the Director of Community Development.
Thank you. I have nothing new to report this evening. I'll just repeat what we shared at the last meeting, which is next week on the 20th of July, we will have two public meetings, one with the General Plan Committee and one with the Housing Element Advisory Board, both on that evening at 5:30 and 7:00 p.m. The General Plan Committee will be considering the initial draft language for changes and implementation of the housing element overlay zone as part of implementation of the housing element. And then the Housing Element Advisory Board will be considering initial partial draft, a working draft that's been prepared responding to some of the comments by staff from HCD and have that discussion. That, so the General Plan Committee is at 5:30. The heeb meeting is at 7:00. As I said, both are in-person meetings here in this room.
Thank you so much. And now I'll turn to the subcommittee reports. In addition to their service on the planning commission, members of this commission serve on several town committees. They are the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, the GPAC, which is now the Housing Element Advisory Board, and the Historic Preservation Committee. The Historic Preservation Committee has not met since the last meeting of the planning commission and we have no reports to make this evening. Are there any other subcommittee reports for this evening? I see none. Okay, given that, I believe that concludes this meeting. I just want to thank staff for, they're always exemplary work for putting together a quick and efficient meeting. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.